We'll call the order, the Board of Commissioners meeting for Douglas County, Nebraska for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please rise for the pledge. First order of business is the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First items of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, and B, a call for a meeting on set Tuesday, August 27th, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property in the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion to second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. And next we'll go into our resolutions, C through G. Was there anybody here to speak on any of these resolutions today for Board of Equalization, C through G? If not, we can take a motion to approve and block, plus adjournment? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, to approve resolutions and adjourn. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes Board of Equalization. We shall now go into the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion to second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next we'll have our report from the Director of Corrections with Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have for you our report for July. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. After the first month of the fiscal year, we are $135,522 under budget. $183,960 were spent on overtime costs. The 3,708 hours of overtime is the lowest number of hours in any given month in many years. I told you last month, our staff averaged three hours of overtime per week. It's now down to two hours of overtime per week. So I am thrilled with the progress we've made on that issue. And our Records Division processed approximately $810,000 in bond payments. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of nine individuals in community corrections and has saved 92 bed days. Work release admitted 18 individuals, house arrest admitted 49. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 42. 57 individuals were admitted to therapeutic community housing units, and two individuals achieved GED. 20 individuals were referred to intensive outpatient treatment. 26 individuals received substance abuse disorder evaluations. Moving on to pretrial services, 234 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,405 were supervised over the course of the month on pretrial release. That is another record high for that program. 580 individuals participated in the 24/7 sobriety program. That is also an all-time high. 138 individuals were supervised via GPS monitors. That saved 3,185 jail bed days. Pretrial release theoretically saved Douglas County $382,200 in detention costs. And law library usage on the tablet system continues to demonstrate increased access with cost efficiencies for Douglas County. Compliance, regular reporting of all compliance-related activity. All data continues. Enclosure number four, Personnel. That should read, five officers below the rank of Sergeant left employment in July. As of June 30th, we were 105% staffed. I should say July 30th, I'm sorry, excuse me, Commissioners. We're 105% staffed among correctional officer ranks. I do want to point out that includes 19 individuals who were hired in our academy. The academy class did begin with 19 officers on July 22nd, and they are scheduled to graduate on August 30th. Three officers were promoted from CO1 to CO2. I want to congratulate Michael Rolf, Sylvester Porche, Arturo Camacho Ramos, Riley Spanell, and Shane Peterson, who were promoted to Sergeant. And I want to congratulate William Sharon, who was promoted to Lieutenant. Congratulations to Officer Brandy Smith, who celebrated her 25th anniversary of employment with the Department of Corrections. Congratulations to Lieutenant Alexandria Johnson, who was selected as our new compliance manager. And congratulations to Sergeant Jade Anderson, who was selected as our accreditation and PRIA specialist. And finally, congratulations to David Moss, who was selected as our new training sergeant. We had a busy, a busy month when it came to assignments and promotions in July. Enclosure number five, Population. There are 1,396 admissions and 1,135 releases. The high count was 1,113. Our low count was 998. Our average daily population did creep up, not unexpected as we get to the late summer months. We had an average of 1,057 individuals. That's an increase of 33. Our average length of stay for inmates, the overall average length of stay was 27 days. 49.46 of our inmates stayed longer than 72 hours. The average length of stay for those inmates who stayed longer than 72 hours was 54 days. 51.54% of our inmates were released within 72 hours, and their average length of stay was 1.35 days. There were 129 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population increased. The felony pretrial population was 747, an increase. The average daily misdemeanor pretrial population was 132. That was also an increase. Probation violations increased. 17% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 64% of our population were minorities. 14% of our population were female, and 18% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Enclosure number six, Medical. There are 1,180 intake screenings, and there were 396 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 17 times for emergency medical care. Two of those were by 911, and there were nine hospital admissions, which resulted in 31 days of hospitalization. And there were 59 off-site specialty medical appointments. And Commissioners, I'm going to take a second and just, I wanted to tell you, we've had some really tremendous challenges in regards to the acuity level of individuals in our custody. And I want, we do a meeting with our medical team every week where we go, called a whiteboard, where we go over the, just the top concerns, the most problematic folks that we have to deal with. And I'm just going to read off some of the, you know, describe some of the conditions that, that we are dealing with, because I think it's quite eye-opening, I think, to the general public who may not realize the extent of the healthcare that we have to provide. Last week at the whiteboard meeting, there were five females who were pregnant in custody. There we have 10 individuals who are HIV positive and being treated. We have nine individuals who are high-risk bleeders. 15 individuals with confirmed hepatitis C. We have, there were 10 individuals on opioid replacement therapies such as methadone. We have, and then we have a, we used to call this our top 10 list. That name no longer works because there's always more than 10 people on it. And I redacted all identifying information. We have, on our top concerns, we have an individual who requires dialysis and IV antibiotics. We have an individual with chronic wounds who's not compliant with us allowing him to have those wounds be cleaned. We have an individual who has spinal cancer. We have an individual who is on a hunger strike, and we're monitoring kidney function and fluid intake. We have an individual with dementia who's incontinent, needs full assist to get from his bed to the toilet. He needs assist with all of his daily living activities. We have another individual with wounds to the feet that are chronic wounds, requiring daily wound care. We have an individual who's swallowed multiple foreign objects. We have another individual on a wound vac. We have another, we have a second individual who was on a hunger strike. We have an individual with alcoholic hepatitis and cirrhosis of the liver. We have an individual with liver cancer. We have an individual with congestive heart failure, among a litany of other issues, nodules in his right lung. We have yet another individual requiring chronic wound care who's not consistently compliant with allowing us to clean the wounds. We have an individual who has, has been out for surgery and has a fistula. We have an individual who has lower extremity weakness. And we have an individual who was out for surgery for a hernia and a bowel obstruction. Just a tremendous amount of resources that has to be applied from our staff, from the medical staff. We talk a lot about, you hear from me all the time about the growing mental health challenges that we deal with. But, but this is becoming a bigger and bigger part of our challenges every day as well. And it is, that this list just keeps getting my attention more and more, and I thought it was worthy to share with you in this forum. Moving on to enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 156 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 581 initial mental health assessments. There were 107 mental health infirmary replacements, in other words, suicide precautions. 151 individuals were placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were three referrals to the Board of Mental Health and seven transfers to the Long-Term, to the Lincoln Regional Center. That was a good month. The previous month was zero, so I'm glad we got seven out this month to LRC. And again, over 50%, 50.3 precisely percent of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. That's the second month in a row, but also only the second month ever that we've crossed that 50% threshold. And I, you know, the, the challenges in our infirmary, all of those folks that I read off to you are intermixed with all of the suicide watches, all the detox protocols. It is a, it is, you know, the biggest, the infirmary units are the biggest challenge we have to operate, because all of those currently, hopefully be changed, we will be changing that in the future, thankfully, but currently, that's the spot where we, all those issues have to be dealt with. Enclosure number eight, Security Operations and Honor Guard. The Crisis Negotiation Team, or CNT, was deployed twice, once in conjunction with our CERT team. Incidents addressed included a person who was refusing to be transferred to a new housing assignment. Our CERT team, our Correctional Emergency Response and Transport Team was deployed once with the CNT team that I mentioned. There were nine searches conducted. Major contraband included modified items for tattooing and nuisance items such as extra linens. Significant contraband included suspected K2, a screw, and burnt paper. And the Honor Guard was not, did some training, but was not deployed in July. Enclosure number nine, Staff Development Wellness and Retention. Three individuals were interviewed for correctional officer positions, and there were 93 applications received. A team from the National Institute of Corrections spent a week at DCDC training our first half in the Strategic Inmate Management or SIM operational philosophy. Nine staff completed train, the trainer, training as well. The first area of the jail is to be, where this is going to be implemented is being trained as we speak in August, and the first SIM housing units will be operational in September. Work on policy changes and compiling the necessary resources for the initial implementation is ongoing. And agency-wide implementation is expected to be completed during the first half of 2025. So basically, we are, you know, we divide the jail into areas of supervision. There are five areas. We're, we're training one area at a time and actually go on a couple housing units at a time to convert to this new way of business. The average rate of probably about one housing unit a week, which with 31 housing units puts us completed sometime in the first half of next year. 19 staff members utilized the Wellness and Retention Office for assistance. Two members were referred to external mental health resources. The DCDC Peer Support Chapter, a newly created division of the First Responders Foundation, received its first donations, and donations will be used to provide staff care packages after traumatic incidents and to show appreciation for exemplary performance. Other noteworthy items, the ceremonial groundbreaking for our mental health edition will be held actually today at 1:00 at Corrections. It'll be in the, inside the gated parking lot. And just in case it's raining, there will be tents that the construction company is providing. So I'm looking forward to seeing many of you there this afternoon. Work on our, work preparing for our transition to Wexford Health to be the provider of medical mental health services at DCDC is ongoing. Wexford will take over these important responsibilities on September 1st. In July, we switched our inmate phone and video visitation service to smart communications. This was, is a monumental step forward and has many benefits. Now each inmate is assigned his or her own tablet to access communication with family, so that access to communication with family and friends is increased exponentially. No longer do individuals have to wait for an available phone or video visitation station, as those functions are self-contained on the tablets. Additionally, the financial burden has been greatly lessened. Phone calls have been reduced from 13 cents to 10 cents per minute, and video visitation rates have been slashed from 40 cents per minute to 10 cents per minute. And community members are still able to visit onsite at our lobby through video visitation for no charge. Work to complete the safety renovation project on the original portion of the jail actually began a couple of days ago. This final phase of the project will replace the current bunks with models that are safer. And finally, at the conclusion of the training of approximately 30 of our staff by the National Institute of Corrections, our staff gave a presentation to myself and my leadership team. Their enthusiasm was extraordinary. I was very proud of their response to the training and their motivation to help us, to help lead us through this critical step forward. Following the training, I met with the team from NIC, and they, and they indicated they were as equally impressed with our staff and their performance during training. As a result, they offered ongoing no-cost technical assistance to help provide, to help us become one of only a handful of SIM strategic inmate management model sites that NIC will utilize as a resource to train other agencies nationwide. We can all be very proud of the professionalism and skill of our dedicated workforce at DCDC, and we, I believe, we have many bright days ahead. With that, I'm ready for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Director Myers. We'll commence discussion, starting with Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you. Mike, can you just, in one second, shortly, explain what, what is the strategic inmate man, what does that actually mean?
Sure. So it is, it's a variety of things, but I'll distill it down. It changes the role of the corrections, the biggest piece to me, is it changes the role of the corrections officer from an observer to somebody who's engaged. You know, our housing units, you know, have a podium that's elevated, and the officers are generally up there, except when they're doing their rounds. With strategic inmate management, the belief is the corrections officer should be out among and talking with, engaging, even creating structured activities, pro-social activities that structure the day inside of the housing unit. So it's really taking it from just a supervision and observation role to really being much more engaged with the inmate population. Not only do we believe that that will lead to better outcomes as far as recidivism and openness to other programming, but it makes sense that it's safer. You know, you, if you're up on the podium in between your rounds and kind of observing from afar, you can't hear the conversations that are going on. Where this is, we want the officers to only be on the podium when they have to be, you know, if they have to, you know, some paperwork they need to do or something. But for the most part, their job is going to be out, moving around, intermixing, having conversations, like I said, engaging, planning activities, and that sort of list of menu of activities that we're, that's what's being worked on right now. And September 9th is when we will do our first two housing units. And, you know, so it's basically just a much more engaged model of supervision and participation in relationship between the corrections officers and the inmates. It goes so far as we, you know, it was a requirement that we train everyone, not just the officers, even the engineers that work for public properties. You know, the, NIC views this model as, even if you're in somebody's room to, you know, fix their sink, you have an opportunity to have a productive conversation, you know, with the inmates that are nearby. And so everybody who works at Corrections is getting some level of training in this philosophy.
That's, that's very cool. And then I was very interested in all the medical things that we're dealing with over there. The one that really stuck out with me, though, is the one with dementia. And I don't want to violate any conversation that would allow someone to identify this individual, so maybe we can talk offline. But that, that has my curiosity peaked as to...
It is a, yes.
Okay. And I think that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, thank you for your presentation. I was going to ask, without any specifics, if someone is transferred to one of the hospitals in Omaha, which they would be, under the cancer of the spine and whatever it might be, or liver cancer, whatever that ailment, do we have, do sheriff deputies or somebody go to the hospital then and sitting in the hallway almost?
Nine times.
If that's okay for you to answer?
It is. The vast majority of the time, it's our corrections officers who do that supervision. However, if there's, if somebody, if there's a, if it's a murder charge or some other risk factor, the sheriffs will assist us. We always have an officer there. There may also be a deputy there if, you know, if there's an elevated safety concern that we feel like we need to, you know, somebody with arrest power and somebody who's sworn to be present. But most of the time, it's all our corrections officers who are present.
And that puts an extra responsibility because of what you brought to our attention with the numbers of illnesses and what's going on. Again, that you've got to cover that spot.
Correct.
Because you're transferring them over.
Yep.
And what a challenge you have there. And it is really a sad situation of the condition, and then they might be released, and then somebody else has to pick up that healthcare.
Right.
Once they're released. We take care of it while they're in our custody.
We do, I know our medical provider, you know, does assist with Medicaid applications when people are in the hospital for, so that hopefully, not only does that shift the burden from us locally, but it also, that coverage then is in place when the person is released from custody. And, and so they're hopefully able to continue to access the care that they need.
Thank you again.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, thanks for the report, Mike. Can you, this is probably just my lack of understanding how the, how the process works, but I was just curious. When you, when you go to the new, the smart communications contract, the service, and the tablets, each, each individual has a tablet assigned, can you tell me how that practically works?
Sure.
Because nobody's sitting in their, in their unit with tablets all day long. I mean, are they, are they checked out? Do they?
No, they, they actually are. So when, when a person gets booked in, they are given a tablet when they're down in the, in the booking area.
Right.
But this is new. I mean, this wasn't how the process was. So, so they're given a tablet. It's their, it's their, that tablet is theirs to use throughout their stay, regardless if they move from one housing unit to another, that tablet follows them. So, other than we collect the tablets at certain times of day, and at the end of the day, you know, we have charging stations, we're charging them overnight and so forth, the, otherwise the individuals, unless there's an activity or something else going on, you know, they have access to that tablet. And the tablets come with earbuds, so they can use the, you know, they can use that as a phone, they can use that as video chat, which they have been using it a lot. So they've really been enjoying that service.
Well, I, I do think that it's, I do think that it's a valuable service for the individuals. The only, and I don't know where I'm stepping with this, what's being tracked? So if somebody, if an individual is, has communication outside, did it change our process? Are we tracking that call? Do we legally have an opportunity to track those?
Unless it's a professional call, such as an attorney, or a psychological evaluation is being done, all, all calls... is being done, all calls, video or phone, are recorded.
Gotcha.
And so we have access to that. We have, and we also get, the software alerts us when there's something problematic or something that, you know, keyword searches and things that we have that, you know, and there's a lot of data that's available for an investigatory purpose, and the software actually is pretty efficient at organizing that. Our partnering law enforcement agencies have access to, if they want, if they need for their investigations, to listen to phone calls or to watch video chats. They always have had that access, and they continue to have that access now.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
We'll jump to Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah, thanks for this presentation. I think like the others, the medical data kind of caught our attention. I almost feel naive to not realize the intensity of the patients and the morbidities that they have, so, and the volume of patients, actually. So when we think about those things, of course, you know that there are increased costs, and over time, as our population ages, it's going to continue to increase because that will include the inmate population. And I know we've discussed this in the past, it'd be nice if we could think of a fiscal solution to that as far as getting individuals somehow Medicaid while they're in the hospitals or in the correction system, which is something I know that the state is not excited about doing. I think this is not something we can do today, but it sounds like, just as, again, the population ages, that there should be some long-term strategic solution to this, not just for Douglas County, but for all inmates as they age, and how do we make sure that they do get the care that they need and that they can have some semblance of dignity too, even though they're serving out, obviously, a term for a reason. So again, this isn't, it's more of a statement than anything else, that as we, this is going to be a problem down the road, and it's only going to cost more and more, and it's just not bad for the, it's not a good situation for the folks there to be receiving their care in a prison instead of a hospital system or skilled nursing or something like that.
Agreed.
Do you have any comments on that or thoughts on ways to address that? It's kind of a big...
We are certainly, and we're talking, having some conversations about, you know, the potential impact of how we can take more advantage of Medicaid expansion in the state. You know, we work, when we have such as the individual with dementia, I hate to say that he's not unique. He's not common, thankfully, at this point. He's becoming more common.
Yeah.
But we've gone from having that be something unheard of to, we kind of typically always have at least one person with some degree. And in this case, this has been the first one that I haven't been able to get an alternative placement for. We've had him for three or four months. And evidently, you know, the part of the journey of dementia, unfortunately, is, you know, sometimes physical aggression. And there was, I guess, assault of enough significance. He's actually on the list to be evaluated by LRC, so hopefully that will happen soon. Obviously, you can't restore dementia, and so he'll then go a different route from us. But, you know, it is, I sometimes question whatever interest of justice we're trying to serve, that there's got to be another way.
Right. All right, thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you. The Medicaid issue, there was the one bill that Senator John Kavanaugh had regarding them coming in to sign folks up, and that kind of got muddled up. And then, and we went back to him. Did that ever get straightened out?
I actually had a conversation with him two or maybe three weeks ago, and he mentioned the need to, he wants to come back to us and talk about that, because no, I mean, the state did not come in. They are not fulfilling their responsibility, per that statute, to have individuals come in and sign folks up for Medicaid who are incarcerated.
Okay. And then just, again, to piggyback on more conversation with, as Commissioner Boyle was continuing the conversation about the dementia folks, I can't remember where the article was or documentary I watched that, when we talked about it here, I think it was last month or the month before, to try to track the age, that age group specifically. And the reason was, is because of, again, the aging population. We're also seeing across the country, older individuals actually committing the crimes. And so I was just real curious to track that. Now, someone who's in prison, obviously, that's going to be even more challenging because there are longer lengths of sentencing than our jail is, but yet it does concern me that what happens to the individual when they do leave, you know, if they have family, where would they go? What facility would they go to? And then if the only facilities we're looking at is the LRC, that also concerns me because it's not a mental health issue.
Correct.
Per se. And so, anyway, we can have more conversation and strategic planning on that, but I think it's a big issue, and it will, again, just get bigger because of our aging population.
You know, to put dementia under the, and deal with a mental health intervention is really probably, it's a square peg in a round hole. I think it's what, something new has to come into existence. I mean, this is the paradigm that as we deal with this, and it becomes more and more of an issue, that we're going to have to create something new in order to appropriately deal with this challenge.
Well, if you put together a group to look at that, I would be interested in, I'm not speaking for Commissioner Boyle, but I think she would be too interested in sitting in on those conversations.
Absolutely.
Any other comments on the director's report? If not, we can take a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Director Myers. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll now commence the Douglas County Board of, excuse me, Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh's absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, and B, the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Do we have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to Section 2, Consent Agenda, items A through K. Do we have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, and we'll go into discussion. Commissioner Morgan?
I was gonna ask on item A, the Cox Contracting Company, to provide building demolition. I assume that's for that building on the southeast corner that the county owns, which was called The Barn. I think that's what this is about, and I'm not sure if Eric's here or Jeff from our Real Estate Department. I was just curious on the timing on that, if it's approved, and that's clear in the sight of all the debris and everything.
Yeah, that's correct. It's the 1101 building.
Jeff, can you identify yourself?
Oh, Jeff McGill, Douglas County Public Properties. We did receive bids a couple of weeks ago. We received three bids. Cox Contracting was low, so we're here today for approval. Once the contracts are signed, it's going to take about six weeks to complete the demolition of that building.
I think you got a good bid there.
I do, too.
Really very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks. Just on item J, I was wondering if, I know that Commissioner Borgerson actually was on the Exarban Future Trust Board of Directors for a number of years, and just to get something off your plate, Commissioner Garcia, I don't know if you would like, would consider having her be the person appointed to that commission?
Yeah, I have an interest in being the representative of the board, on that board, as the current chair, so that's where I'm at with that. Other comments or questions?
Was she on G?
She was on J. But if you have something, Larry, you can feel free.
I would like to speak about G.
Yeah, go ahead.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I decided to speak on this today because I am against Douglas County sending people at our expense to a national association of county governments.
And Larry, just to clarify, this is the Nebraska Association of Counties.
This is item G?
Yeah. It's the Nebraska Association of Counties, just to clarify, but feel free.
I'm sorry?
It's not the National NACO, this is the Nebraska Association of Counties.
Well, even the Nebraska.
Okay.
Because I know she was past president of the, you know what. Anyway, you work for us, not for other counties. Other counties' business aren't necessarily ours, so your money is not used to its best purposes. But anyway, the National Association, where you probably learned your groundwork, I'd like to submit two documents about the National Association of Counties, which all Nebraska counties must be going to. And I object to their best practices of using the terms democracy and our democracy when we are not. You pledge every day to a republic.
We are not a democracy, we're representative democracy, or any other form of that. I think Father said that very clearly. So I'm protesting that. I'd like you to speak to them about changing their words and leaving D E I and everything else out of their way. Repay your salary, repay your expenses. We want you here.
All right. Is there any other comments or questions on Consent Agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Section 5, Public Hearing. Item A is a public hearing for Class 1 Beer Wine Spirits, on sale only, for All Holy Spirit Greek Orthodox Church of Omaha, Nebraska, DBA Zenia Omaha, at the address listed there on the final agenda, with manager application for Allison Bring. I will open up the public hearing for this item. All right, go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Hannah Satch. I'm an attorney with Baird Home, just down the street here in Omaha. If I may, I have my client, Allison Bring, with me here. She's on the manager application. I'd like to bring her up to the podium, if you don't mind. Okay, go ahead, Allison, please. So as she comes up, I'm happy to answer any legal questions here. I helped prepare the application. I can confirm it's consistent with Chapter 55, the Nebraska statute, and with your ordinances as well. So I'm happy to answer your legal questions, and I'll turn it over to Allison to answer any technical questions that you all have about the application. But we'd ask for your recommendation today.
Sounds good. Any questions from board or from public during this public hearing? All right. If no questions, I will close the public hearing and see the will of the board. Motion by Rogers to approve, second by Borgerson. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
We'll now go into Section 6, Committees Discussion and Action. Under Finance, we have our Budget Report as Presented. Under Administrative Services, we do have one resolution approving appointments to the County Commissioner Committee on Artificial Intelligence. Commissioner Rogers, did you have anything to comment?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair. Basically, this is just follow-up to the resolution the board appointed. Just so everybody knows the process, there was some specific requests from people, and with Diane Carlson and Karen Colesell, we put out some information. So the names you see are people who responded willingly to be a part of it. And we'll start a little bit this Friday with a meeting with the gentleman who's here in town, actually, for the AIM Institute's conference, where they're talking about AI. And we're going to just piggyback on that trip that he made here and have a conversation this Friday to kind of begin and get a feel where things are going in September. So with that, I move to approve.
Motion by Rogers to approve, second by Borgerson. Any additional discussion on this item? Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, 68132. This is not specifically on that resolution, but it has to do with administrative services. I understand that this afternoon, the City Council will be working on that resolution involving the county, the cooperation between county and city in enforcing city ordinances on this property and surrounding properties. And I'm sorry, I'm very confused, but I thought it was their job to enforce the law, whether it was federal, county, or city. So I don't understand why we need to spend our resources passing a resolution allowing the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to enforce a city ordinance here or in the parking garage.
Larry, we do need to stick to the resolution on AI.
Okay. I just wanted to point it out because you people aren't talking about it, but the city is going to pass something on that. Maybe they're overriding your authority. But if I'm not mistaken, if it's illegal now for a sheriff's deputy to walk me out of here, then you've been breaking the law for a long time. Citizens like me think they can enforce the law wherever, and a city policeman can enforce the law wherever. If that's not so, then your deputies have been illegal ordered to remove me from the chambers quite a few times. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comment on this resolution? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Under Human Resources, we have our weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Today, we do have a need for executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations and personnel. Do we have a motion and second to go into executive session? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
The board will now go into executive session for the purpose of labor negotiation and personnel.
You bet. Motion to reconvene and adjourn, motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned at ten thirty two AM.